All right, so it's seven. Shall we get underway?
Yes.
I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order. I guess we should probably confirm everybody is here, right? Is Mr. Bailey here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coolidge?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Giles?
Yep.
Hopkins is here. Mr. Wyman?
I'm here.
Yep, okay, so we're all here. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wyman and a second by Mr. Coolidge. I do have a couple of additions if I could. Following number five, this got inadvertently left off the warning. Could we add, "Consider Purple Heart Town Designation"? Consider Purple Heart Town Designation. The board has received the information about that, so we can discuss it together. And then, following number seven, an additional executive session with the same citation. So we'll have one, I think with Margaret Cars. Is Margaret here already? Not yet. Okay. So we'll have one with Margaret and the town manager, if you would. And then a second one for the Select Board alone after that. Any other changes? If not, all in favor of the agenda as it's been amended, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? That's unanimous. Item two is to approve the minutes of April 13th.
I can motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Coolidge moves to approve and Mr. Wyman seconds. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted?
No.
None heard? All in favor of approval of the minutes as they were submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Item three, the town managers' report. Mr. Atherton?
So this is my report for the weeks of April 13th and April 20th. Segment six, work commenced today. We'll follow the VTран's guidelines that I sent out with the board packet. And actually, that's changed yet again, so I did get some protocol from Casellas today and what they're doing too, that I could certainly share with the board. It's kind of lengthy, but they've got a pretty good policy in place of how to deal with keeping social distancing and everything else during work. Other happenings, the local emergency management plan for 2020 has been approved by the IRPC and Vermont Emergency Management, so we're good for another year. We had our first meeting with New England Woodcraft and Watershed Consulting and the DEC to discuss moving forward with a design for dealing with stormwater runoff at the New England Woodcraft site on North Street. This does come out of that new three-acre impervious service rule that's in effect now. And we're hoping to get this funded entirely by grants if we work in collaboration with Woodcraft. We're pretty eligible for grant funds for this project, so more to come on that and hopefully we can get it 100% funded. Union Street Sidewalk Project will commence on the 29th of April. That's all I have on that right now. We held a Zoom conference with Ray Counter, Del Cook, and Mr. Hopkins to discuss how we're going to be moving forward with the proposed joint water sewer billing that we started talking about around a year ago. We're looking forward to the streamlining, the meter reading, and the billing process. The goal is to have quarterly meter reads and place the billing on a four-bill annual cycle. So we will see that getting closer to completion here in a couple months. Underground electrical service to the wastewater treatment plant has started to deteriorate and one phase was completely out. So last Thursday, General Motors, Green Mountain Power, and Patch Electric started working on there. We did set two new utility poles inside the fence and Patch Electric will be there to run the new three-phase service to the main building, so it was pretty bad, so we need to do that. It's a big deal. We don't need to lose all those panels down there. Economic development news? This is more Bill Moore stuff here. We made many cold calls to many businesses about applying for the assistance available via the CARES legislation and the expanded unemployment benefits. The project has been on hold. It was revealed that the funding had been exhausted for the time being. The US Senate had passed more funding and Bill will continue to work with folks to make sure they are connected with the help they may need. And as the bill is now headed to the House for additional funding to support the Economic Injury Disaster Loan and Paycheck Protection Program. Representative Stephanie Jerome was with us tonight. Forwarded an offer from VTAL about free wireless hotspots that they're donating to towns. They're offering to pull fiber connections into large routers and provide free service to the end of the year or beyond as a way to help people to have access to access telemedicine and distance learning. We replied in the affirmative immediately. We were actually the first town to contact VTAL. Myself, Stephanie, and Bill had a conference call with the president of VTAL the next day and we're able we're on our way to having a service based here at the town offices. Fiber is being run by UST's cable into the town office. It was done last Friday. And our only responsibility is providing power to the wireless router. This is the line. The line will be separated from our existing network, so no security issues. And our downtown will have free Wi-Fi and the advantage of existing infrastructure in place to continue to provide after post-pandemic downtown Wi-Fi and possibly expand high-speed access within the downtown and beyond. We're also working with Amanda O'Connor at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for the third round of the Vermont Department of Public Service Broadband Innovation Grant. This is a planning grant for feasibility and business planning about expanding broadband access in unserved Vermont communities. Our RPC has been strongly encouraged with the help of Representative Jerome and myself and Bill to apply. We're committed to helping secure the letters of support for Brandon, Gosch, and Sudbury and Pittsburgh. I think that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Are there any questions for the town manager from the board? Anything from Mr. Wyman? No? I have none. Mr. Giles?
Yeah, I have a couple of little things that I just wanted to kind of tie up loose ends. A couple of meetings ago, we talked about the Carver Street being included on posting, and I'm just curious with the road crew getting back to work if, in fact, Carver Street was posted as a, you know, a road that shouldn't be traveled in mud season.
Well, we're taking all the posting signs down this week, so we did add it after the last meeting. We did have to put it on the list.
Yeah, I just never saw it up. I was just curious as to what was going on with that. It's probably, you know, virus stuff has got busy. I'm curious to know about the Wi-Fi. How much of the downtown does that cover?
Bill would be a better one to answer that. I'm not really sure. We're putting a router in the office here, so that's the start.
Yeah. I don't mind feeling that question. So we had UST's cable here last week, or actually, was it Friday? Yes, it was definitely Friday. They were here Thursday and Friday, and they ran the cable, the fiber into the building. And now we're waiting for VTAL to send us the router. It's a $1,600 wireless router. Our conference call with the with the president of VTAL was interesting. He's a really neat guy and he was just kind of like, "Yeah, sure, and I'm not sure what it does, but it's gonna be great and it's wonderful and you guys can have it," and it's it was really cool. And so I'm not sure what the, you know-
The reach will be?
What the reach will be, but
Okay.
We have it in place. But again, what was really exciting is the fact that we now have a fiber splice here in town. We can use it for the town offices purposes, at the point at which we can, at the point where we can kick Comcast's curve. But again, the opportunity to be able to possibly set up repeaters, you know, there's a lot more possibility than we had.
Very exciting. No, I congratulate you all on that great work.
Stephanie forwarded on this email and I was like, "All right, let's do it." And then like it was just like boom, boom, boom. Like the guy was super responsive. The president responded right away, responded 11:30 at night saying, "Yeah, I'd love to." So thanks to Rep. Jerome for forwarding that on.
So I have one other question, Dave. You know, we're coming into the new year and been moving along some, and at some point in the past, I talked about helping with getting green fleet data together. And I thought it would be helpful to start getting a list of the vehicles and equipment that use fuel, so I could start doing that, you know, data figuring out to help support that that policy. So I wonder if you can get that to me sometime, the list of vehicles and equipment?
Sure, if you wanted to come in and see Elaine, she's got the breakdown of everything. We have to keep a log of what vehicles get fuel at what time and what the mileage is, so it'd be pretty simple for her to just print that out for you.
Yeah, do you think you could have her email that to me?
Yep, I can ask her to do that.
Yeah, thanks. And yeah, that's everything for me. Thanks.
And Mr. Coolidge, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Bailey, anything for Mr. Atherton?
Yep, two quick ones. You mentioned segment six starting up again. How about Park Street? Anything on Markowski and when they're gonna get going there?
Not really. We've talked to Markowski off and on and with Aldrich and Elliot. The one concern is they don't want to see them burning their construction days up if they can only have you know, a small crew to not get a bunch of work done, so we're hoping to get them back here in a week or so, but they still do have to wrap up Union Street, so I mean, I understand why, you know, they don't want to burn their time up if they can't get the amount of work done they need to get done, so it's
All right, and then we had had an email regarding Lester Hollow and the culvert engrading by the town, but to be paid for or whatever, I assume by the Forest Service. Is that going forward? Is that going any further than that?
Yeah, we're just getting numbers to them. We have to send out like what our hourly rates are for the grader and the loader and our employees. We're basing it on FEMA cost right now, and we have to break it out for FEMA reimbursement, so yep, that's still moving forward. We gotta get the culvert put in first before we can do that, though.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager from the public in attendance tonight?
Seth, I have a quick question.
Lee Cars, yeah.
Dave, is there any updated news on the Dunkin' Donuts and the mobile station? I knew they were supposed to start in April originally, before the pandemic, but...
Nope, that would probably be a Jeff Beazuzzi question anyway, but I have not heard anything from the folks at Dunkin' Donuts recently.
Okay, thanks. What's his last name again?
Beazuzzi. He's Arizona administrator.
Yep.
Other questions for the town manager from the public? If not, we'll go on. We've got public comment and participation. We usually start with the board. So we'll start. Mr. Bailey, anything that's not on the agenda tonight you'd like to discuss?
No.
Mr. Coolidge?
Nothing.
Mr. Giles?
No, not for me, thanks.
I have nothing. Mr. Wyman?
Nothing.
So for the public, we do have both of our state representatives here. I wonder if either of their excellencies would like to lead off with some public comment tonight?
I can go if you want, Seth.
Butch is unmuted. Okay.
Thank you. So you know, one thing in my world that's been happening a lot is our constituents having trouble with the Department of Labor and having trouble putting claims in for unemployment insurance, et cetera, et cetera. Last week, I was able to get many of, not many, but a few of the folks that had some severe problems compensated the last one cleared today. But over the weekend, members of the legislature and in conjunction with working folks at DOL have stood up a help site that legislators can access easily, and they have set up a, what they call air traffic controllers, to look at the stuff that legislators are submitting and assign our requests to certain people within their group to handle some of the requests that we're putting forward. And that was stood up today, kind of officially today. And so we have, and I'm sure Steph has, a list of, I think, 12 questions if people call us or email us that we need to answer, then we can submit this form to somebody that has direct access to this, and hopefully the process will be smoother. You can contact me at my home phone of 483-2398, or at my Ledge address, which is bshalege.state.vt.us. And from there, I posted this on my Facebook page this afternoon, and I think I've got eight or 10 requests already to handle, so it's pretty easy and hopefully this will move the process further along. Currently, the biggest jam up right now is in the PUA program for self-employed people. It's just getting rolled out. And, you know, some of you are involved in that, and that's jammed up pretty tight right now, but this should help. And they've also, this program also allows legislators to actually work for the Department of Labor and help unjam and help move things along within this process. I personally am going to stay away from that process because I don't want to mess it up. It's bad enough as it is without my hands in it right now, so but others are doing it, so that's kind of where we stand on that.
That's quite good. So that's a very local resource for folks who are having difficulty. They can contact Butch or Stephanie and you're gonna kind of tee it up for the system and connect with someone who can implement it. Oh, that's great.
We're gonna try.
Okay. I did just see a note from Representative Jerome that the microphone's not behaving for you. Can you hear us?
We can't hear you.
Yeah, we don't hear Stephanie at all.
Okay, so you can contact Stephanie, or she, I hope you're okay with this. Give me a thumbs up or something. At sderome@ledge.state.vt.us. Right, Seth? You good with that?
Okay.
All right.
All kinds of microphone difficulties tonight, but okay. You can hear us, Representative Jerome? Okay? Yes, she's hearing us. Okay. So if that if that gets reconnected, we can hear from Representative Jerome later on?
Stephanie wanted to say something. She could also put something in the chat if she wanted to type to us.
Yeah, that's how I found out she was having trouble. She chatted to everybody that she's got microphone trouble.
Depending on how quick her typing is, she might be able to-
Before we move on? Okay.
Or if she wants to email me with something, I can insert it into the minutes if that's okay with everybody.
Sure, so if anyone wants to insert something into the minutes, we can email Shauleen. That's great. So other members of the public tonight with items for public comment and participation, other items that didn't appear on the agenda?
Seth, can I give a brief update on school stuff?
Please, yeah, Barry Varian.
All right. Firstly, I'd like to thank Lee Cars for the article she had in the reporter the week before last, which was very well done, and it laid out our plan pretty discreetly, so I'm very thankful for that, and that was a big help for us. I got a text message this morning from Gene Collins, just to give you a couple of updates on how things are progressing with the Continuance of Learning Plan, which began last week. And I'll just read that. "We've begun the distance learning and have sent the first round of packets home last week. The remainder of the school year, students will receive work either by mail or bus delivery or digitally, which will be able to which will and will be able to finish their work for the rest of the year. One concern we have with distance learning is the inability to reach every student through the internet. We've loaned out over 350 Chromebooks to students. However, the lack of broadband access in parts of the community is a big concern. About 24% of our students lack access. For those students, we are creating paper packets that go home. We started weekend meal delivery as of last Friday, April 24th. And listen to this number, this is impressive to me. On Friday, we delivered over 4,500 meals to cover three days of food."
Wow.
4,500 meals, and that's in a six-town district. On Monday through Thursdays, that was a Friday delivery to cover the weekend. On Monday through Thursdays, they deliver 1,500 meals, so that's a very steady rhythm of a lot of meals going out. However, we are still in need of cooler donations. So if anyone has a cooler that they're willing to donate, and this is typically for the weekend meals, where they're delivering three days' work, please drop them off at the Markowski Fieldhouse behind OV. All of the employees are working in one fashion or another, either through preparing meals, assisting with packets going out, remote learning for the teachers. I think it's going pretty well. My daughter, who is a teacher at Nashaby, told me that participation is very good with the remote learning and that the teachers are networking together to try and make sure no one falls through cracks there, so good work by a lot of people.
Thanks so much, Barry. That's great. And that is the challenging side of circumstances, but education is important, and it's great that families are partnering a little bit more than maybe they're used to, and everybody's getting the learning.
Yeah, and the key thing, I think that, you know, they tried to do, which I think is very, very good, is the equity piece of our education delivery with the different mediums that are there now, with people having access to internet, others not having access to internet. Trying to make sure that everyone has equal opportunity to really get the material, work with the material, contact the teachers, and continuing on, at least through this year, for completion has been really nice.
Good awareness for all of us, yeah. Other public comment and participation tonight?
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Brent Buehler.
Yes. Can you confirm how, question number one, can you confirm how many COVID-19 cases have been in Brandon? And then question number two, have you all considered an extension for the folks for the property tax that's due in three weeks for the folks who have been laid off or had to close their businesses?
So I, this is Seth Hopkins. I have no knowledge of the number of cases in town. I'm not sure whether Mr. Atherton would and be able to disclose it. And my understanding is that the legislature is working on a statute which would enable a legislative board like the Select Board to consider changing due dates for property taxes or making some accommodation, because right now the town has the authority to do that, but only as the town meeting is my understanding of it. And if that's not correct, then Representative Jerome or Representative Shaw might be able to correct me. But Brent, as far as I understand it right now, the Select Board can't do it until the legislature does something to enable us to do it, and I understood that that was a topic today in the Senate.
Okay, that's right.
Getting a nod from Butch, I think that's the right track. Dave, did you have any information about the number of cases or anything else in Brent's question?
I have not heard of any cases in Brandon yet, so that's-
And to be clear, I am fairly certain that the Select Board would not normally be involved in finding out that kind of information, and I don't know that the town manager would even generally be alerted to that, but-
I was listening to the governor today, and he made a quite specific point of saying that he works really hard to not possibly identify individuals because of HIPAA issues. And that, and so I think I would be surprised if we would know something on the town level.
Can I just direct something on that front? From a media standpoint, we've been asking for these town-by-town numbers for weeks, and at the press conference on Friday, the governor said those numbers were going to be available today. So I haven't seen them yet, but-
I also listened to him, though, and he said that they would be available, but not for towns with less than five cases. And I'm getting some affirmative nods from some other folks, so I think that that was my understanding of listening to him on the radio today.
Well, if I may, I've heard rumors, and that's why I asked the question, because I really don't like relying on rumors for information or repeating them, so but I've heard numerous different stories about what's going on, and, you know, those can be worse sometimes than the than the truth, so that's one reason I asked.
So we do have Chief Burkell here. He's got some information perhaps or some comment?
Just Seth, that I checked the state, they update the EOC website every day, and Vermont is now reporting by town, if you go to look at that site. But the state, as far as towns go, if it's less than six cases, they're showing as a gray color, and Brandon is so far below the six-number cases.
Thank you.
There isn't any cases at all in Brandon. It's below the reporting level.
Wonderful.
And then I do see now, I'm looking at the chat, there's a question from Representative Jerome to Barry Varian. Barry, has the district sent out information regarding low-cost internet programs offered by Comcast and Fairpoint to families that don't have internet access?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. There's a lot of information that the RNSU website has regarding access, but I can't specifically answer that question. I can look into it for you.
And she also says, she gives, Stephanie Jerome gives her phone number, 683-8209, if anyone needs to contact her regarding that form that Butch mentioned, and she's helped four folks with that today. And will continue to forward information to help Brandon as she gets it. And she's very pleased that Bill has moved so quickly on the VTAL Wi-Fi router, which will be a huge addition to the town. So thank you for the comments. I'm sorry I didn't see them in a timely way, but we got them in. Other public comment and participation tonight?
If I could say something to Butch and Stephanie, I'd appreciate it. It's Brent again. The quarterly payroll statements are due, and the Department of Labor website is difficult at best on a normal day, and now it's overwhelmed. And I tried to file my quarterly payroll statements, couldn't do it. Finally, just printed off the form, sent it in, filled it out by hand, mailed it in. They contacted me today that it's required that you file it online or there's a $100 penalty. So I had a discussion, emailed discussion with them about the challenges I've had getting online to file it and just the challenges I have with the website. So you know, it's the perfect storm. We're at the end of the quarter in a reporting period, as well as folks trying to get on to apply for unemployment applications, et cetera.
That's it. Seth?
Butch, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I do. I want to thank Barry for filing his report and paying stacks of the state. Really appreciates that, I'm sure. The, and I appreciate your efforts and keep trying. They are totally overwhelmed. You hit the nail on the head. And I didn't hear you say what the outcome was after you talked to the person, the live person, and I was curious as to what that outcome was.
Well, I'm still emailing. There is no outcome yet. I face a $100 penalty for having filled it out and mailed it. And I still couldn't get on today when I tried. I tried three different sources to get on. So it's in the works, but the website is difficult on a good day, so.
Sure, sure. So I hear you say that you paid the penalty?
I have not paid the penalty. It wouldn't be due until, I mean, the report's not due till the end of the month. So I've continued to try since I got this notice to file online, but you know, it's overwhelmed.
Yeah, but I'm sure I'm gonna throw Representative Jerome under the bus, and her committee will talk about those types of issues when next time her committee meets. And I'm hoping that's true. Yes, Stephanie? Just wait. Okay, got it.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Butch, and Stephanie, and Brent. Further public comment and participation? If not, why don't we go ahead along to number five? We are aware that we have some Brandon Land Use Ordinance Amendments that the Planning Commission has developed and that we need to have a hearing on. I think this is just on our agenda tonight so that we don't forget about it. And I believe it was a consensus of the board at the last meeting that we will wait a little bit longer. We don't have to do these until July. And we'll wait a little bit longer with the hope that we could schedule an in-person hearing when those kinds of things are permitted again. Any challenge to that line of thought? Okay, if not, that's the way- not, that's the way we'll leave it, just as it was. For 5A, this is an item that I did, I did send along some information last, after the last meeting, and I apologize that it did not end up on the agenda for this meeting. So it's something I've been considering for a little bit of time. And as Memorial Day was getting closer, I would like to offer a proclamation. So it's a one-page thing that I did send around. The board should have it for reference. I'll send it to Charlene for sure, and see if it's gonna, maybe it gets revised tonight. I don't know. But I'll read it first. It's a proclamation from the town of Brandon, Vermont. "Whereas the people of Brandon, Vermont, hold in highest regard the selfless service of the men and women of our nation's armed forces, and whereas military veterans have paid a high price for our freedom by leaving their homes and families, dedicating prime years of their lives to defend the U.S. Constitution and every community and every citizen of the United States, and whereas the contributions of citizens of Brandon who served in the armed forces have been vital in securing the way of life we may take for granted, and whereas a number of combat veterans suffer wounds or even death in battle, a singularly meritorious act of patriotic service, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal, the nation's oldest military decoration in current use, was created by George Washington in 1782 and is presented to servicemen and servicewomen who have been wounded in action or whose death has proven the ultimate sacrifice, and whereas the town of Brandon is home to a substantial, active, and highly decorated population of veterans, including a number of courageous Purple Heart recipients, to whom it especially wishes to render respect bought at a costly price. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brandon Select Board proclaims the town of Brandon, Vermont, to be a Purple Heart town, and be it further resolved that the Select Board encourages Brandon residents of all ages to show their gratitude this upcoming Memorial Day for the sacrifices of those who merit the Purple Heart, and be it further resolved that the Select Board offer this proclamation to Brandon's American Legion Post Number 55 in appreciation, and that a copy be spread upon the town records." So I sent this first to Mr. Atherton. What it really means is, you know, it's going on the record and saying the things that I said. It doesn't incur much by way of cost or responsibility. I'm going to step away quick, quick, and come back with something from my printer. So I sent to Mr. Atherton some images. I don't know if you can see them or not. But like, there's a couple of, couple of like road sign kind of things would be put at each end of town, is the idea. And I am not a veteran. I did call Aaron Tucker here in Brandon, my around-the-corner neighbor, who is a Purple Heart veteran. And I ran the idea past him, and he was, he was quite honored by the idea. And he mentioned there's a number of Purple Heart recipients in Brandon, and he felt sure that they would all feel that the respect from such a proclamation would be well-received. So I offered that to the board, and I move its adoption.
I'll second it.
The second from Mr. Wyman. I believe there's some discussion?
Yes. I've read your proclamation, and I appreciate having it to reflect on for a while. And I've come up with a brief statement that I've emailed to Charlene so she can include it in the minutes. And I'd like to read it now. It takes about a minute. "War is a tragedy. It is a tragedy for those civilians who are thrust into harm's way. It is a tragedy for the death and destruction that spreads throughout communities on both sides of the conflict. And it is a tragedy for the wounded soldiers who return to lives filled with physical, emotional, and psychological suffering. I respect these wounded veterans for doing what they thought was the right thing to do. Today, I believe that the best way to honor their sacrifices is to do everything I can to prevent the next war. I believe that all wars are ultimately ended through diplomacy. I believe that there will come a time when we will refuse to accept war as a conflict resolution strategy. I believe that war monuments and public memorial signage is one of the ways that war is glorified and perpetuated into the next generation. Thus, in doing everything I can to prevent the next war, I oppose any glorification of war. In closing, I respect our wounded veterans, but I oppose having Brandon become a Purple Heart town."
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Is there further discussion? Yeah, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in just quickly and say, Tim, I appreciate your viewpoint and the thought you put into the, your statement. But I have to say, having had family members in the military, I kind of going to, you know, go the opposite direction. But I did want to at least recognize the effort and the mindset that you have there. I appreciate that. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there other discussion? Any public comment? If not...
I would like to say, I agree with Doug's statement. I agree with Tim's statement. War is hell. It should be avoided at any cost at any time. And so there's no right side to this argument. There's both sides, and they're both right. We need to honor the folks that served their country, had no choice, followed orders, and did so. And that, so that's it.
Thank you. Any further comment? We'll vote by roll call. Mr. Bailey?
I vote A.
Mr. Coolidge?
I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Giles?
I vote no.
Mr. Hopkins votes yes. Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that's a vote. Item six is the bills. I should say, and I apologize, I didn't think of it at the very beginning, we do have a liquor control meeting to do after the bills. And generally, we would do that before the executive session. So if that's okay, that's the way it will go tonight, too. So, but first, we have item six, which is the general fund warrant, and then a Route 7 warrant. What's the pleasure of the board on the warrants?
I'll make a motion. General fund warrant of $41,750.76.
Second. Motion by Mr. Coolidge, and a second by Mr. Giles on the first warrant. Are there any questions on the bill?
Yeah, I mean, I just have, what did we have to do to the 2011 International, Dave?
These are Italian. We didn't have to do it.
That probably gives you...
Dave, we can't hear you. Can you move closer or move the camera?
Sorry, I had it set up for Brian. I can pull the warrant, the invoice, come on, Tracy. We did quite a bit of work, though. It's...
Yeah. No, that's, that was the one we've been having issues with all along, isn't it?
That's the oldest one we have, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions on the first warrant?
Yes, I have one question. Doug Bailey here, and I'm just questioning the second item, the Ben's uniforms for $6,859. I'm just asking you to confirm, is that our new police uniforms that we talked about in the budget meeting?
Yes.
And so we, all of our men have new uniforms. When are they going to start using them?
Um, it was in here last week, weren't it? So I would guess they started at least last week.
Okay, super. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments before we vote? All right, ready to vote on the first warrant? All in favor of the first warrant, $41,750.76, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. Item B, there's a Route 7 construction warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve the Route 7 warrant of $2,971.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wyman, and a second by Mr. Giles. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Say no. That's unanimous. The ayes have it. Okay, so at this time, what we generally do is recess the Select Board at, looks like, 7:41, and convene the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners. So we'll bring the Select Board to recess. I'll call the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners to order. Is there a motion on the agenda?
Oh, move.
Motion by Mr. Wyman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Giles. You moved on my screen. Any changes to be made?
Seth?
Yes.
Do you want this, the liquor control recorded, too?
Might as well. It'll be, like, short. Any changes to the agenda? None heard. All in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Can we do items two, three, and four as a consent agenda? Is there objection?
Yep.
There's no objection. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting and a first-class, third-class, and outside consumption permit for Milne Golf DBA Nashaby Golf Club?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Coolidge, second by Wyman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. That's unanimous. Item five?
I motion a German, the liquor control.
Prior to a German?
Whoa!
Well...
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I thought there was going to be a teeny bit of discussion on our consent items. I wasn't sure how that worked. Just, I did get ahold of Sue Gage.
No discussion.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Well, anyways, just to let you know on the board, I did get ahold of Sue Gage, and she corrected a slightly missed, an unfinished application. All the applications were, in fact, completed fully. And Sue's going to continue to try to make sure that all the applications that come to us are complete.
Thank you. That is an ongoing concern, and it's an ongoing effort. And we appreciate Sue Gage's help in doing that.
Yeah.
So there's a motion to adjourn by Mr. Coolidge. Is there a second? I second the motion to adjourn. It's not debatable. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. So we're out at 7:43.